Welcome, everybody. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of November 12th, 2019. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And for the folks at home, we have up at the screen the agenda items that we'll be discussing this evening. Very good. All right, so we start the meeting with, as always, the first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. And we'll see if technology will cooperate. And there we go. We hope.
Anywhere too far?
We hope. No, it's just taking a while to load. Apologies. Each month, we report on the financial status of the town. This is for the period ending October 31st, 2019. We started out with the opening balance of $7,875,594. We had receipts of $770,934. Disbursements of a little over $1 million, leaving a remaining balance of $7,582,366. And Harry, I think we have the CPF balance for you.
$983,463.
That's in one of the accounts, but in total.
Oh, no, I didn't know where the other account was.
Yeah, that's just the amount that's...
Is it totaled in the other account?
Yeah, on the other page, you'll see, Harry. We have a separate page for you. You'll see, we're now, at the moment, up to $1,504,550. And I will note, we just received a check today for the month of October, and that's for a little over $31,000. So we're about $1,535 altogether. We have just a few adjustments proposed by Ann Conway. We'll take note that they're just a couple of minor adjustments to, on DB, that we want to go ahead and make sure their funds in that budget line so we can purchase that attachment. Other adjustments are related to the water department. We also have your variance report. Are there any questions? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report and the budget adjustments.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We also have a clerk's report. Claire, would you like to read the report, or...
Okay. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor... Oh, this report is for October 1st to October 31st. Total local shares remitted, $906.02. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets for the spay immuner program, $53. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $135. Amount paid to New York State Department of Conservation, $1,482.48. Total state, county, and local revenue, $2,576.50. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and money received by Suma Can Town for counted revenue during the period stated above in connection with our office, accepting only such fees and monies, the application of which are otherwise provided for by law.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, Claire. Announcements, just a couple of quick announcements. First of all, we had elections, as most of you know, last week, and want to take this opportunity to congratulate all of the candidates for office. We all know up here what it takes to put yourself out there for the folks in your community, and it's a very important endeavor. And so, as I like to say, we've all won because we live here in Red Hook. And so, thank you all very much for running for office. The other announcement I'd like to make, and which we're going to discuss now, is that because of the nature of when our meetings fall, the second meetings of both November and December, both are either on the holiday itself or right before the holiday. Our second meeting in November would be the night before Thanksgiving, and the second meeting in December is actually Christmas. So understandably, we're going to entertain a motion to cancel both of those meetings. It may be necessary to supplement our first December meeting with a special meeting or two if there's something of a time-sensitive nature that we need to approve. But otherwise, for now, we're going to go ahead and cancel both of those meetings for obvious reasons. So those are the two announcements I have. I do know that, once again, out of the goodness of her heart, Patty Bowman will be having a community Thanksgiving dinner over at the Firehouse. A lot of folks volunteer for that. It's just a wonderful event, and that is on Thanksgiving itself. And I believe it starts somewhere around noon. We'll put that up on our website for tomorrow, but look for that wonderful event.
Do you know what day it is?
On Thanksgiving, yeah.
Thanksgiving Day?
On Thanksgiving.
Oh, great. Be careful, roll away.
Okay, very good. That's, excuse me, all the announcements I have. Anyone else? Okay.
Well, you know, I wanted to say, I think we should congratulate the Red Hook High School girls volleyball team. They won the Section 9 Class B championship a week or so ago. And they were supposed to play tonight in the sectionals, but it was canceled. So it's Thursday night. But our congratulations go to them for a great season. And their championship season.
Okay.
We should congratulate the women's soccer team.
Yeah, they didn't quite make it, but close.
Oh, they got to sectionals, I think. So, yeah. Women's soccer got to sectionals for Red Hook High School. Congratulations.
Congratulate them.
Congratulations, everybody. Well done.
Congratulations to both.
To both teams, right.
Well done. Okay, very good. Public comments, anybody? Linda. Oh, I noticed we don't have a microphone for you, but we don't need it, right? Okay.
Regarding St. Margaret's Committee, we need to reconstitute that, and we also need to use that building for something. As I, as stated before, Pandon will be moving. I think the building is perfect for them to be accommodated very easily. Even ADA is easy to do. So consider it, please.
Okay. Thank you very much, Linda. All right, well, excuse me. First off, we have some business that we need to take care of. Something that transpired a while ago, but because he was a candidate for office, it was not appropriate for us to recognize him at the time, but we would like to do so now. And that is, our very own Judge Jonah Treibwasser has been elected, appointed...
Elected.
Elected as the president of the New York State Magistrates Association. And Jonah, we have a nice proclamation or resolution honoring you this evening. Shall I read it to you? Because I know you love all these wherashes. You're one of three people, by the way, in the community that likes to...
The supervisor, I don't have to provide you with a question.
How did I suspect? Would you like me to read it slowly so you can relate it? Okay.
So I can understand it.
So you can understand, okay, very good. All right, so it's a resolution honoring the honorable Jonah Treibwasser as president of the New York State Magistrates Association, whereas Judge Treibwasser has been a town of Red Hook resident since 1979, brings 50 years of experience to the bench as a dedicated police officer, investigator, attorney, prosecutor, and judge, and whereas Judge Treibwasser is a graduate of the John Jay College of Criminal Justice, class of 1972. I was in third grade then. At New York Law School, class of 1979. And whereas Judge Treibwasser was recently recognized by the Dutchess County Bar Association for his decades of public service with their prestigious Gardland Award. And whereas Judge Treibwasser has generously volunteered his time with the Scouts, Red Hook Rotary Club, fellow Rotarian Chris Shaw over there, for his hard work and dedication. And we congratulate him on receiving this well-deserved honor of being the president of the New York State Magistrates Association. And this resolution, we are passing to commemorate this achievement. And so, Jonah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Clearly, we're not the only ones who know how terrific you are. And Jonah, what you don't realize is there actually is a grand prize associated with this, which is you get to be in a selfie with me now that you've achieved this rather...
I'm speechless at the honor.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
I want to thank, while the supervisor comes on, I want to thank the board, all of you, for this very kind honor and recognition. It's always been my pleasure for the past 12 years to be your judge. Elle and I have been residents here for 40 years, and being judge is my way of paying back the community for giving us a wonderful life for 40 years, giving our children a wonderful education. And as president of the State Magistrates, I travel all over the state to various county associations and give speeches and things, but it's always a pleasure to come home to Red Hook. So thank you again.
Congratulations, Jonah. Tonight's grand prize winner is... Shall we?
Yeah, it's nice.
Okay, let's do it this way. You've got some photo bombing going on there.
Don't put your tongue out.
Where are you, Sarah? Come on.
Oh, wait. Do you ask me to... It looks weird when we're just up behind you. Like random people.
I think I'm hidden.
Floating and...
Yes, you're walking.
Thank you again, once and all.
Thank you. Okay. The first order of business that we have tonight is a resolution to authorize submission of an application to DEC for an urban and community forestry grant that relates to acquiring trees for the town's Recreation Park West. This is a part of the project as a whole, plantings, and this gives us an opportunity to offset some of the costs associated with that. And we have the tree commission members. Linda Keeling is here with us tonight. Our representative from the engineering firm is going to submit the grant application. And so, we have resolution number...
108.
108, thank you, Claire, she was on the ready. Authorizing submission of the application to the DEC for an urban and community forestry grant regarding acquisition of trees for the town's recreational park west. For the folks at home, we'll be applying for a maximum of $50,000 with a match of $12,500. That can be in kind, by the way, and likely to be for a total project cost of $62,500. And so, we are just authorizing that grant application, which is being worked on as we speak and is due on December 4th.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second, we have any further discussion?
I'll just say, so like while we're on the topic, but Linda has done a great job keeping the whole group together and like focused. And I know between her and Brandy and Ann being such wizards at using Grants Gateway and, you know, doing the actual technical stuff of the grant, we're going to be in really good shape. So everybody should feel very confident about this, too.
Ann Conway's been very helpful.
That's what I said, yeah. Brandy and Ann, yeah, both of them, very...
Oh, it's helpful. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much. Another, perhaps not so exciting topic, but ministerial nonetheless, Resolution 109, which is the engineers and the attorney to the town have been working on a form of drainage easement, obviously in conjunction with our highway superintendent. And so, this is for tradition at Red Hook.
Right, so when the project, the first section, first two sections were approved, I'm sorry, first section, one of the things they needed to do was move a drainage structure that was leading off of Old Farm Road pursuant to an easement that we had in place. So they, we entered into an agreement, which was recorded, to allow them to move that and relocate it in a place that was acceptable to us. The agreement said that, once that was done, then we would file a certificate of completion, and then the old drainage easement disappears, and the new drainage easement is then permanent. So we have that certification from the engineers at this point, so we are ready to accept that completion of the replacement easement. Okay? That's what this is.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you very much. Third item of the agenda is the motion to approve the 2020 town budget. We've had our public hearings. We've gone through the process of taking it from tentative to preliminary. For the folks who have been following along this year, essentially, we're keeping taxes flat or even a tiny bit lower. Our reserve funds are looking well into the future. And so, all that's left to do is a motion to approve. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just say, I know one of the topics that came up when we were talking about the highway fund was the possibility of this interim program that Teresa had proposed. I started making calls to check up on how other towns have experienced that, and I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
I only just started late last weekend with Veterans Day. I think people, you know, are still working here, so...
Okay.
I'd like to get back to you, though, on that, and I'll do it in a memo so that it's like in writing in case I'm not here when you want to make your, you know, an adjustment if the town decides to go forward with it. But I want to make sure that we put that here since I don't think it made it into the final budget, but I know it was one of the carryovers from our discussion at the non-televized, what's the word?
Budget.
Budget discussion meeting, budget planning meeting, whatever, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Very good.
Thank you, Sarah.
We have also the tax...
Give it to one of our other guests here to break through his first meeting.
Yeah, both can take care of it. See, I wouldn't want to presume.
And as a matter of formality, Ann Conway has run the property tax cap calculation, and as expected, it meets the cap requirements. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2020 budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you very much. Item number four is just a very simple motion to renew. We have a standing contract with Dutchess County Sheriff's. We haven't actually employed them for a few years. We contract with the local Red Hook Police here, but we always put ourselves in a position where we could, at a moment's notice, hire them if we needed to. And so, each year, they provide us with the rates for the ensuing 12 months, and that's what we have in front of us. And so, all we are doing at this point is approving a shared service arrangement that if we were to enact would be at these, these points. And I would like to make a motion that we approve this extension to an existing contract with the sheriffs.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a resolution, or resolutions coming up, all related to going out to bid each fall. Our highway superintendent organizes for us bidding materials so that we can go out and get the best possible prices for various materials related to mostly winter, but could also throughout the year. The first resolution deals with authorizing the purchase of ice control abrasives for Highway Department 2020. And this would be Resolution Number 110. Yes, Claire?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so, the bid results being what they were between three bidders, Calaruso, Kalanen, and Redwing. And the lowest responsible bid was from Redwing. And so, the highway superintendent has determined the location and FOB price of the product at the place and time and with the quantities anticipated to be needed for the calendar year. The bid of Redwing is the lowest responsible bid for snow and ice control abrasives. And I so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. We have the same for hot mix asphalt. It's Resolution Number 111. And in this case, there were even more bidders. From what I can tell here, well, Kalanen, Calaruso, and Heckam were the bidders. And the lowest responsible bid is Calaruso and Sun for Item 1, dense base, Item 3, dense binder, and Item 5, shim. And the bid of Kalanen Industries is the lowest responsible bid for the following items, 6F top a half and Item 7F, top quarter armor coat, as set forth in these bid tabulations. And so, Resolution 111 has the award to those two companies for those various products, and I so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Road services and materials is now our third and final one related to highway procurement. And here's a very long list of items that we go out to bid for, everything from soil to crushed stone to gravel to boom and truck operator for tree removal. So the results of that are the following. In Resolution Number 112, dated November 12, soil, Redwing, crushed stone, 3/8ths and 3/4... Sorry, a quarter and 3/8ths to Calaruso. Crushed stone, number 2, 3/4ths, number 1, and 2 mixed, 3/8ths and 3/4ths, and number 3, 1 1/2, all go to Kalanen. Calaruso had crushed stone screening, screen fill, Item 4... Sorry, screen fill, 1 inch minus, all go to Calaruso. And Kalanen, or Calaruso, Item 4. Crushed stone, rip rap, Calaruso, 3/4, Item 4, Calaruso. Medium to heavy stone, Calaruso. Gabion light, stone fill, stone fill fine, all Calaruso. Surge stone, 8 inch minus. In case you were wondering how many different products we purchase here for the Highway Department. All for Calaruso. Washed gravel is Redwing. That's number 3, which is 1 1/2 inch. Washed gravel stone, number 2, 3/4, 3/8ths, and 1/4, all Calaruso. And Item 4 is Redwing, along with bank run gravel. Cobble, which are tailings, are Calaruso. And ice control sand, washed sand, is Redwing. Old mix is Calaruso. And for the tree removal, again, is Craig Kirkella. That was a mouthful. And that is also Resolution Number 112. And you see all the bid tabulations?
Would you repeat that, please, Sarah?
I'll challenge you with that one, Harry. And that's Resolution Number 112, and you have the bid results. Are there any questions? If not, I would move that we approve Resolution 112. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Agenda item 8. As we've discussed in the past many months, the former St. Celia's property. The town, in conjunction with the village, felt it was very important that those properties be protected for their cultural heritage, their contribution to the community character, and for the context of the village and for public use. And what we have arranged, essentially, with the village of Tivoli making a recommendation, is a private acquisition of the church properties by the Martin family. They wish to repair the structures and open up the church as a community center and cultural arts place and a place that can host many community events and civic groups and open their doors to the public. And as part of this arrangement, they will be donating the parking lot to the village of Tivoli. And they will be placing a conservation easement on the church itself to protect the integrity of the exterior of the building. We were unsuccessful in convincing the church to leave the stained glass windows. Unfortunately, they insisted that they must, because they are religious in nature, they must be removed from the church itself. But we think all in all that this is a really terrific arrangement for the folks of Tivoli. I know that the village mayor and trustees are very excited about this. And so, we have codified this arrangement with a number of documents. And so, that's what we are doing tonight, is reviewing those documents and as a board, giving our approval so that they can be filed and that the acquisition and the repair work can begin with the former St. Celia's property. And so, what we have is Resolution 113. I'm just wondering which one's going to be the secret determination? Okay, you see the conservation easement document, the aerials, the postal management form, the Part 1, 2, and 3. It's a short form. It's in it. Because all of these actions we are taking are protective in nature. And so, 113 is the resolution classifying the action.
Could I just ask the board to approve by motion the acquisition of the EAF by the supervisor, just as a preliminary step here?
Okay, fine. So there's a short form, EAF. And if you would be so kind as to authorize me to sign that.
I so moved to authorize you to sign the EAF.
Okay.
Second.
Very good. All in favor? Aye.
And as the supervisor mentioned, the EAF reviews the project in a... And as the supervisor mentioned, the EAF reviews the project in a short form. There is no development proposed as a part of this action. This relates to the acceptance, because the board has to approve anytime there's a donation of real property. The board has to approve the acceptance of those interests. And even though you're not getting real property, you're getting an interest in property, which is the conservation easement, third-party enforcement right. And.
I didn't mention the right of first refusal. And that's important for folks at home to know. That should the, should the properties no longer be used for the purposes outlined under this agreement and be put up for sale, then the town would have the right of first refusal to acquire those properties.
Right. So those are the interests that are being reviewed as part of this secret review. And so you have the short form. You also have a coastal assessment form, because this is within the villages of the ERP area. Although, again, there's no development being proposed, so the action is identified as being within that scenic Hudson, excuse me, scenic district and the state's district scenic area of statewide significance. And also contiguous to an Ag District 20 property and located within the villages of the ERP. So taking those issues into account as you do your review. But again, this is a conservation easement intended for preservation of the interest in the property. And so we go on to type, excuse me, part two of the short assessment form in which it's proposed that no or small impacts could be identified as a result of the action. And then there's a narrative that's been prepared in the part three, if you'd like to take a quick look at that, which describes the action as we just discussed. It indicates that it would not result in any adverse impacts on the property and identifies the location within the historic district and explains that this gives the town a third-party right to enforce the terms of an easement granted to the village of Tivoli in order to assure that the architectural, historic, cultural, and associated features of the property would be retained and maintained for conservation and preservation purposes that would allow these historic resources to be better preserved and protected and have a positive impact on the environment. And the acceptance of the right of first refusal would give the town the right to purchase the property in the event that the owner wishes to sell it. And that, to be made clear, that's not an option. It's a right of first refusal where someone decides to sell, and then this right would come into play. And does not propose any development or disturbance and therefore without having adverse impact on the land is the narrative proposed in the draft. So you have a resolution that accompanies that. And the resolution describes the action and indicates you have a short form including the proposed parts two and three dated. And we'll put today's date, because that's the date you authorized the signature, November 12. And then you have a CAF similarly dated November 12. And having reviewed those issues and considered the secret criteria, classifies the action as unlisted, meaning it's not type two, it's not type one, and adopts the finding conclusions regarding probable environmental effect contained within the EAF and concluding that the project would not have an adverse impact. And then a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Good. Thank you, Chris. So that's Resolution 113, classifying it as unlisted, and I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
And then last but not least is Resolution 114, which is authorizing the acceptance of the conservation easement and the right of first refusal. And I would move that as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank everyone, the village trustees of Tivoli, the Martin family, the archdiocese, and certainly Father Pat for your patience. And I hope that it proves to be a win-win for us.
So is that, is that it as far as this particular phase of things?
Well, that's it for this board. Right, Tivoli will be reviewing the other agreements and so going through that process, yeah.
The village hasn't closed yet.
Oh, no, no, no.
Martin.
No, but this is, this is, the village will be doing the same thing as you are reviewing the documents and so forth.
Right. Wow. I am more than pleased to say that unless there are public, any more public comments, Linda.
I want to know, is there a photo inventory of those stained glass windows? And if not, it should be done prior to those windows being taken in?
Yes, we are going to have a documentation done. Emily Major will coordinate that so that we have a historical reference. Yes, we have amateur photos, but there's actually going to be a documentation. I forgot the terminology.
Baseline.
Well, no, not a baseline. There's a, there's a particular term for when you take an historic property and you document it, it's not baseline.
Yeah, there's a baseline document that would be prepared in connection with the conservation easement as it, you know, before the property is acquired.
In theory, the windows would be gone at that point.
Well.
No, 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 it's going to happen before then.
You're going to do the assessment before.
Yeah, yeah. It'll come to me what the term is. And I'm sure Emily doesn't like that. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. Absolutely. And they will be leaving a couple of small acknowledgement windows there. The Livingstons are acknowledged there. You may recall that the Livingstons gave much of the money for that church to be constructed. And so those paintings will be left, but anything with a religious nature will be removed from the church, so as is their policy. Okay, that said, if there are no more public comments, I would like to entertain a motion that we go into attorney-client. And before doing so, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. All right, attorney-client, I so move. A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Linda, you might got lucky.